I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of Bowling Green City Council. A lot of friendly faces in the room this evening, and we're happy that you're all here. Thank you. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Osbacher.
Here.
Harold.
Here.
Allenbaugh.
Here.
Jeffers.
Here.
Robinette.
Here.
Roland.
Here.
Zanfordino.
Here.
Thank you. We're going to deviate slightly from our agenda this evening and move forward to special recognitions. We have a couple of special recognitions that the mayor is going to lead us in, so I'm going to turn it over to the mayor at this point.
Mr. President, members of council and all assembled, yes, thank you very much for the opportunity to -- well, we're going to begin with a special promotion within the fire division, and I'm going to ask Chief Mormon if he was pleased come forward. I'm going to ask our new deputy fire chief, Aaron Behr, his wife and daughter, if they would please come forward.
Yeah, I was going to let you say it back there. Because I understand you're outstanding. And, Chief, perhaps you would like to start us off with a few words about the process here, what we're about to do.
Absolutely. One of the things that I really enjoy being the fire chief of Bowling Green is to promote individuals at the fire division, especially people that have worked so hard as what Aaron has his entire career, to helping the citizens of Bowling Green. One thing I just want to say, though, being in the fire service for as long as you have, Aaron, over 20 years, you can't do that with the help of your family. They're there to support you through the good times, the bad times, so you need to really say a big thank you to them afterwards, so I appreciate it.
Chief, thank you so very, very much, and Aaron, I just want to congratulate you on this promotion, a very significant one, being the deputy fire chief, and you've worked very, very hard for it. I echo all the words said by Chief Mormon, and I'm so pleased that your wife and daughter could be with you on this very special occasion. Plus, you've got a few mates back here, right? Ozzy talk here, so.
Yes, it's nice to see you here.
They have your back, right?
Yes, they do.
Okay, very good. All set?
Also, I just, I might have Jen, Aaron's wife, just step forward. And just, do you want to be that person?
Yes, I'm going to do this, but you don't have to hold up your right hand, unless you want to. Aaron, I'm going to ask you if you would please hold up your right hand here and repeat after me. I, in your name, please.
I, Aaron Behr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To do my duty.
To do my duty.
As deputy fire chief.
As deputy fire chief.
For the city of Bowling Green.
For the city of Bowling Green.
I will support.
I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Ohio.
The Constitution of the state of Ohio.
And the charter of the city of Bowling Green.
And the charter of the city of Bowling Green.
I recognize the badge.
I recognize the badge.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As a symbol of public faith.
As a symbol of public faith.
And trust.
And trust.
And I will remain.
And I will remain.
True to the ethics of the fire service.
True to the ethics of the fire service.
I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the position.
Of the position.
To which I am appointed.
To the position for which I am appointed.
Aaron, congratulations.
Congratulations.
You didn't even hurt him.
You're welcome.
Congratulations.
Good to see you.
Congratulations.
presentation now, a resolution honoring Daniel Gordon, member of the council of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio. Mr. President, perhaps you would join with me here, and I'm going to ask Daniel and his parents to come forward, and his sister, if they would be so kind.
Go ahead.
Daniel, things haven't changed much around here, Dan, where it's still tight, in more ways than one, right? Members of council, thank you very much for the adoption of the resolution honoring Daniel, and if you don't mind, I have, so all assembled can hear, okay? Whereas Daniel Gordon honorably and faithfully served the citizens of the city of Bowling Green as the first ward council member from January 1, 2012, until October 17, 2018, and whereas during his time on council, Mr. Gordon exhibited thoughtful judgment, purposeful determination, and earnest concern for his constituents, and whereas Mr. Gordon's abilities were demonstrated through his service as chair of the Transportation and Safety Committee, and the Community Improvement Committee, and his service on the Parks and Recreation Committee, and whereas Mr. Gordon advocated for the first ward in advancing and supporting issues relating to the quality of life, neighborhoods, and relationships between the city and university, which were visible through numerous accomplishments, including the development of Ridge Park, Bridge Park, very important, and the Community Action Plan, and whereas during his tenure, Mr. Gordon was a member of a council which had to address difficult fiscal times and required numerous items for consideration as the city faced staggering funding reductions which resulted in a great deal of study and consideration by the council, and ultimately bold efforts to balance the needs of the community with the funding capacity. And whereas in addition to offering a differing generational viewpoint to his fellow members of council and to the mayor, Mr. Gordon was also a long-term resident with a sustained relationship with BG SU, which allowed him to offer a valuable perspective to council. And whereas this council wishes to publicly recognize and honor Mr. Gordon for his contributions to local quality of life and for his dedicated and faithful service as a member of city council, I'm going to ask the president of council.
Certainly. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the council of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio, that the council of Bowling Green, Ohio, on behalf of the government and the citizens of this municipality, does hereby thank and commend Mr. Daniel Gordon for his dedicated service, notorious achievements, and noteworthy performance of civic duty while a member of city council, and wishes him all the best in his future endeavors. Daniel, thank you very much.
It's rare to see me on this side of the podium, isn't it? Well, before I get started, I want to say thank you. I noticed on the agenda tonight you have two pieces of legislation that I'm particularly intrigued by. The first, standing up to the state of Ohio for stripping millions of dollars in Bowling Green taxpayer money over the years, and another piece of legislation opposing State House Bill 6, which would do tremendous damage to Bowling Green and our leadership on green energy. So, thank you for that. I'm deeply honored to receive this resolution, and I want to thank my former colleagues on city council for passing it, and for Mayor Edwards for signing it. I want to thank my parents for being here, my sister for being here, my friends for being here as well. It's kind of funny, because my dad's sitting over there with his own honorary resolution that city council passed for him 29 years ago. It's about as old as I am, and ever since I saw it, after first getting elected eight years ago, I've looked forward to receiving my own at the conclusion of my service. It's funny, too, because my dad's resolution has Bill's signature on it, and now mine does, too. Marx's on mine as well, which fits because I signed his after I succeeded him in 2012. So, I feel like we've come full circle. Serving on city council was the honor of my life. I'm turning 30 this fall, so I'm getting old, and thanks to all of you, I can say that I spent my 20s helping people, which is not something that every young person gets to say. Helping people making their lives better and making a real difference. I spent seven years with you, helping to govern a city and build an even stronger, enduring civic culture and sense of community so that Bowling Green works for everyone in it. We made significant progress together, and I'll forever be grateful for that. I also want to thank all of you for your service. I know all too well how thankless a job it often is being a city council member. There are actually some people in town who believe that we lead glamorous lives when each of you is paid $5,000 a year to do what you do. You get yelled at for having a different opinion. You don't even get your own parking space, at least not an official one. We work hard just to make incremental change, so I want to take a moment and do something we didn't often get to do when I was on council, which was celebrate the work that we all In my time with you, working together, we began improving neighborhoods that have suffered for decades. We passed three pieces of anti-discrimination legislation so that everyone knows we value everyone in our Bowling Green family. We built new parks and green spaces. We created the largest solar field in the state of Ohio. We fortified a utility system that is the envy of the region, and we achieved 40% renewable energy use citywide. We said no to gun violence, fracking, and a gas pipeline, and brought in food trucks. We stood up for Bowling Green, as we're doing tonight, against the state of Ohio after it took millions of our taxpayer dollars away from us and tried to subvert home rule and local control. And we adopted Complete Streets principles and committed to committing to bike lanes. In short, Bowling Green took further leadership on economic, social, and environmental justice that has put us on the map. All of this is a big deal, and it's an ongoing legacy everyone here should be proud of. We moved BG and brought it into the 21st century. I learned so much from all of you. I studied political science, philosophy, and public policy, but it was serving in government as an elected official that taught me how change happens. I came to better understand the moral and professional demands of leadership, problem-solving, compromise, and making people's lives better, and I made some friends while doing it. In a time when our nation is politically polarized, I found city government to be a model of governance. Anyone who knows me knows I was sometimes frustrated with how a vote went or how slow progress could be, but I can honestly say, as Bill is fond of saying, that the system works here. That's a big deal, too. When I first ran for office, I was pretty cynical about politics, and one of the reasons that I ran was to attempt to disprove that cynicism. As bad as things can get around the nation and around the world, I did disprove my cynicism here in Bowling Green. So, thank you for that.
That concludes our special recognitions for this evening, so let's revert back to our agenda and consider approval of the minutes. I would note that there is an amended copy of the versions at each council person's desk this evening to reflect some minor changes that were requested by Mr. Zanfordino. So, approving that, or assuming that each council member has had an opportunity to review the amended version, I would ask if there is a motion to approve the minutes that are being presented to us this evening. So, moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. The minutes are approved as presented. Kay, do we have correspondence this evening?
Yes, distributed to you prior to the meeting was a listing of the budget transfers to be made for the month of June, and those require your approval, please.
Is there a motion to approve the budget transfer?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. The budget transfers are approved as presented.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Kay. Let's move to lobby visitation. Kay, who is registered for lobby visitation?
The first person we have is Wendy Chambers from the Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I am Wendy Chambers. I am the director of the Convention and Visitors Bureau and a proud resident of Bowling Green, Ohio. I do want to say thank you to Daniel for his service. It was very eloquently put this evening. I am here tonight to present our annual report for the Convention and Visitors Bureau to the council, as well as our action plan for 2019. They have been distributed. Last year was an interesting year for us because it was the year of starting our new brand for Bowling Green, Ohio. So, everybody needs to be thinking Bowling Green. If you haven't seen the new logo, it looks like this. This is backwards because this is a window playing, but it looks like this, the state of Ohio with Bowling Green. And we're proudly announcing to the world that Bowling Green is in the state of Ohio. We're not Bowling Green, Kentucky. We're not saying, oh, that Bowling Green, because we want people to know where we are and where we're located. Also this evening, we're going to talk about the STAR report, but I do want to mention that back in 2018, we did purchase from the state of Ohio the Long Words International Study, which gives our economic figures, and that was in our last year's annual report. So, this year, we purchased the STAR report, and I'm going to be having some people from the board come up to talk about that. Can I have everybody from the Convention and Visitors Bureau board stand so everybody can be recognized? These are my board members, and I have a staff member here, our full-time intern for the summer, Rebecca. You can stand as well. Okay, so now, thank you. Before we move on to the STAR report, I do want to do a little commercial because we have a little thing coming up called the Great Ohio Bicycle Adventure. This is the fifth time that Bowling Green has hosted this event. Goba likes Bowling Green, and so we're pretty excited to have the first big event at the Wooster Green, which will be on June 15. We're starting at the fairgrounds, which is the host site this year for Goba, with a costume parade that will go from the fairgrounds to the Wooster Green. This is on June 15, starting at 5:00 p.m. And at the Wooster Green, we're going to have a celebration, we're going to have food trucks, we're going to have the BMX bicycle demonstration from the right direction, as well as Ginger and the Snaps playing in our new gazebo. So, come down and have a picnic with us, celebrate with the Great Ohio Bicycle Adventure Goba bicyclists. They're excited to come and excited to be here. So, on that note, I am going to turn it over for a short presentation to Tony Vedder, Todd McGee from Best Western, and Christopher Miller from Holiday Inn Express.
Excuse my voice today, guys. I'm a little, I had some allergies going on, but I am Todd McGee from the Best Western, general manager there, and I sit on the board with Wendy Chambers of the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and we're really excited of the direction that the Convention and Visitors Bureau's been going over the last few years, really with the 1% increase in hotel motel tax. I think it's kind of sparked Wendy a little bit and able to open up her budget and bring some more really neat groups to Bowling Green. So, we purchased this STAR report, which is the Smith Travel Research. It is what every hotel basically worldwide reports to. So, every day, all of our figures go straight to this report, and this is how they compare all the hotels and see what different markets, how different markets are doing across the country and across the world. So, I think on the first slide, we're going to show you total rooms sold for Bowling Green. It's up there, and we can see it. Do I do it? Ah, I didn't know I had that power. All right. So, what you're going to see here is total rooms sold from 2012 to 2018. It basically is almost an increase of about 20,000 rooms over that timeframe. We're right around 100,000 now in, or 2018, and we're, you know, we're predicting that to be up a little higher this year as well. So, and then with the new hotel coming on, I think you're going to continue seeing that Going forward to room revenue for Bowling Green, this is another really exciting slide here. From 2012 to 2018, 2012, we're looking at just under 6 million in room revenue. 2018, we just were shy of 9 million. So, that is a substantial increase over those six years there, seven years. With that, I'm going to let Christopher take you on with our supply.
Hi, I'm Christopher Miller from the Holiday Inn Express. I'm the general manager there. We noticed that the supply increased by 30,660 rooms in 2017, mainly due to the fact that we added a new hotel, the Fairfield Inn Suites. And then we also noticed that ADR increased 18%, and ADR is what is known as average daily rate, so you take the total number of rooms, you divide that by your total revenue, and that gives you your ADR. And then RevPAR, we increased 16.1%, and revenue is what RevPAR is called, revenue per available room, and that's the way, so say you increased your revenue, but your occupancy was down, we, that's how we are able to compare if we actually made more revenue compared to last year.
Thank you, Chris. My name is Tony Vedder. I'm with downtown Bowling Green. I'm the director there, and somehow I got swindled into doing this. But let's talk about room revenue for a second. So, room revenue increased 32.9%. That's the numbers, as he was talking about earlier. He was giving you the numbers from up to almost $9 million, but over that seven-year period, it increased 32.9% since 2012. And I've been doing this for 27 years in the hospitality industry prior to taking the position here, and that is a huge increase. It's something Bowling Green should be very, very proud of. Total rooms sold increased 18.4% since 2012, which is also a very, very high increase even compared to the state. So, but the question that we were asked as a committee is, in 2018, there was a percent increase in the bed tax. So, when you increase the bed tax, every city you stay in, you pay a bed tax, you pay a city tax. So, when it increased at 1%, the question was, at the board meeting was, did it help us or did it hurt us? Well, in 2018, the taxable room revenue increased 5.2%, as you can see. So, yes, we increased by 1%, but we increased our revenue by 5.2%. So, did the bed tax hurt us? No, it did not. It actually increased revenue, taxable revenue. It goes back to fund the services for the CVB, to bring more routes into the city by, if you take that percentage out, over 4%. So, it did not hurt us. So, thank you very, very much for taking the time to listen to us today.
Thank you all for that encouraging information, very good news. We appreciate all your hard work.
Next person is Neocles Leontis.
I reside at 119 North Summit Street. I would like to speak today in support of legislation being proposed by the Community Improvement Committee regulating the dispensing of single-use plastic bags by local stores and establishing a sustainability commission. I view the proposal to create a sustainability commission as very significant and especially deserving of support. Several years ago, Rachel Phipps and I, and Rachel Phipps is a candidate for city council from the third ward at the present time, we proposed to the city to appoint a sustainability coordinator and also to create a sustainability commission to advise the coordinator and the city on ways to reduce waste, increase reuse and recycling, conserve energy, and generally reduce pollution of all kinds. We were very gratified when the coordinator position was created by the city, but we were disappointed that at the time, the city decided not to move ahead with the commission. The city now has the opportunity to correct this oversight, and that's why I'm very excited and here to speak about this. Given the important role that the sustainability commission can play on a broad range of issues, I would like to suggest that these two proposals, one about the plastic bag, dealing with plastic bags, and the sustainability, be actually separated and considered and voted on separately. Whether or not the council decides to move ahead with the plastic bag ordinance, it should in any case proceed to create the sustainability commission and put it to work exploring ways to make our city operations more sustainable. I understand there is some concern in the administration that such a commission will make the sustainability coordinator's job more difficult. However, I believe to the contrary, if the right people are chosen, people with real expertise in diverse areas relating to sustainability, for example, energy production, transport, water management, housing, et cetera, as well as active work experience, whether in industry, academia, or government, then the commission will actually help the coordinator do her job more efficiently and effectively, not hinder her, not slow her down. At a time where our national and state governments are abdicating their responsibility to deal with multiple environmental crises that threaten our citizens' health, well-being, and safety, it is incumbent on local governments to lead and demonstrate by example the multiple benefits of sustainability initiatives. We in Bowling Green are already excelling in the area of renewable energy development in spite of these difficulties that are being thrown in our path, which you are dealing with right now, but there are other areas where much remains to be done here, and this includes energy-efficient transport, housing, especially the insulation of housing, and of course, waste management. Many cities across the country and around the world have enacted climate action plans with concrete goals to reduce carbon emissions by half and then to zero over the next 20 to 30 years. A sustainability commission to advise city council, as well as our coordinator, will focus and accelerate our efforts to replace unsustainable city operations with sustainable practices that save money, improve our citizens' health, and contribute to a more livable future generally. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Neocles.
Lee Hockel.
I'm Lee Hockel, and I reside at 1435 Cedar Lane in Bowling Green. I'm here to speak for myself alone, not for any of the organizations to which I belong. My husband and I frequently have guests, often from other countries, and they always comment about how beautiful our city is. Our city is beautiful, even though we don't have lakes, or river, or mountains, or the things that usually make a city beautiful. What makes our city beautiful is our trees and our gardens. We have a lot of trees, and we have many, many gardens, and most of these are around our homes. We beautify our homes and yards, and therefore, we contribute significantly to the beauty of our city. We also have wonderful parks, and they're well-maintained, and they contribute a lot to our beauty as well. But trees, shrubs, and flowers are messy. Much as I love them, they are messy. And so, my first plea to you is that you make, as you make laws and rules, please remember the gardeners. Make it as easy as possible for us to dispose of our mess, of the mess our Make it as easy as possible for us to dispose of our mess, of the mess our gardens make, not just when there's a storm, but day in and day out. My second plea is because so many people enter our city coming from the north. We need to make improvements at the southeast and southwest corners of Main Street and Poe. They're not beautiful. They're not a good way to introduce people to our city. In fact, I would call them eyesores. Landscaping around these corners would really help. I understand the necessity of having the machinery that's there, but let's beautify it. Landscaping is not going to cost all that much. This intersection should be attractive and inviting. And people coming from the north will also often turn left to go to the university. Now, what do they see between Mercer and across from the airport? I don't know if you've gone by there lately, but it's become a kind of junkyard. There are pipes, there's construction huts that have been there forever, I think. There's more and more stuff gets added to it. Again, at least some arborvitae, or a row of them, or something to screen it. I understand you have the necessity to store things, but let's get it out of sight. It's not a good way for people to identify with our city and our university. So, let's renew the partnership between the residents and the city to make our town even more beautiful. Gardeners can't do it alone. Thank you.
Lee, thank you for those comments. Appreciate it very much.
Carolyn Kaweke, not sure how to pronounce that last name. Okay. Hello, I've never done this before. So, my name and address?
Please.
Okay, Carolyn Kaweke. I live at 517 South Main. And I actually came because I had, I had thought you were going to be doing something with the plastic bag ban. So, I'm just going to very briefly address that, and just because I don't know if I'll be back up. And that is that I am in favor of a plastic bag ban for many of the reasons that have been listed here again and again. I don't think I really need to go through that list because I'm sure we've all heard it. And it's, there's a lot of reasons for that, and I'll email them to if you want them. But I'm sure everyone's heard a lot of them. But I will address the HB 6 resolution, which is in the works here for this meeting in particular. And I think this can be dealt with very briefly, to be quite honest, because there are a number of problems with this bill, that it's good for first energy, and it's not good for very many others. You know, even the corporations of Ohio are against it for the most part, because they are going to get slammed too. So, we've got BG is going to get financially slammed. Individuals are going to get amounts added to their utility bills. And corporations are going to get amounts added to their bills. And it's, as I understand it, it's in perpetuity. It's not something that has an end in sight. And it also has the possibility of being increased without a lot of people knowing about it. So, that is a huge issue. But that is not the only issue. It defines nukes and coal as clean energy, which they are not. Nuclear energy gives off a great deal of radioactive waste that they still have never solved the problem of, even though some people declare that it's, that it's getting safer. The other is, coal is not clean. So, it's best for us to move on from coal to the alternative energy sources like wind and solar. It's going to be best for all of us in terms of cost and in terms of environment. This bill eliminates some energy programs that have been very beneficial to people all over Ohio, and so, we lose that. And the last thing I note is that it's actually blocking the installation of wind and solar right in the bill. So, these are all things on why I want to say that I am in support of the idea of opposing HB 6. And thank you very much.
Thank you for those comments. We appreciate it.
Mary Henkelman.
I'm Mary Henkelman with the Bowling Green Chamber of Commerce. And again, Daniel Gordon, congratulations and thank you for your service to City Council. I'm here on a little bit lighter note. As you all well know, the Chamber of Commerce, the City of Bowling Green, and Bowling Green State University host our annual community fireworks, and they will be on July the 3rd. I'm asking for the support of the community, either with a donation to the Bowling Green Chamber of Commerce Foundation to support the fireworks, or by attending one of our fundraising events. We're going to start out with Porkaling at the Farmer's Market, the Porkaling Cook-Off by Belleville Brothers. Thank you to them for hosting that for us. So, if you are a fan of the Porkaling, come down to the Porkaling fundraiser on, I'm going to say January, June 19th at the Farmer's Market. They have the Farmer's Market from 4 to 7, so June the 17th, I'm sorry, June the 19th. That's one fundraiser we're doing. We also have a fundraiser at Buffalo Wild Wings. You just present a coupon that you can get on our website, bgchamber.net, present it, and we receive 15% of the sales that evening between the hours of, sorry, 5 and 9 o'clock. Just present that coupon, and they'll credit us to help support the fireworks yet again. And then, we have our Cheers and Beers Annual Fundraiser with our celebrity bartenders, one of, who is here, Frances? Thank you. On the 28th of June, and the location has been changed. That will be held at Pizza Pub 516. So, again, they'll be working for tips, and we will get a portion of the sales that night too. So, please come out and support the fireworks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
That's all we have.
Great. Thank you all for your comments this evening. Let's move on to the introduction of new legislation, please.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffers.
From the Finance Committee, I have a resolution adopting the estimate of revenues for the year 2020. I have a resolution strongly urging the Ohio Governor and members of the Ohio General Assembly to restore their local government fund to pre-recession levels.
Bruce.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Rowland.
From the Parks and Recreation Committee, I have a resolution authorizing the City of Bowling Green to participate in the local park improvement grant program and to file an application and accept grant funding upon grant application approval.
Thank you, Sandy.
From the Committee of the Whole, I have a resolution opposing House Bill 6. Moving on to our official reports, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Members of council and all assembled, I'm going to turn over some of my usual time that I have, that you've always been very generous in sharing with me. But to call to the podium here, Margaret Montague and also Dr. Lisa Hanisono from BGSU, Professor of Communication at the university. Mr. President, you might remember about maybe two months ago, two and a half months ago, you and I met with Margaret and Lisa, and we talked about what Dr. Hanisono was planning to do with a special event. That was held about maybe roughly four weeks ago, Bruce, or thereabouts. And Bruce, you represented the city on that Sunday evening, as I recall, and were very much involved with them. And so, at this time, I'm going to turn the podium over to Margaret and Lisa. And I'll let you identify other members of your group. And I should say, we've seen Margaret up here a number of times, wearing usually a hat of Human Relations Commission, not in our town, a few other things. But thanks so much for giving your valuable time to this very, very important meeting. Please.
Good evening. I'm going to be very brief, but we, the university, through a MAC grant that Dr. Lisa Hanisono was able to secure, got to put together an event that would be an engagement between something in the community of Bowling Green and the university. And so, she put together a team, and tonight, we wanted to just share, just for a few minutes, some of the outcomes of that event. You know, sometimes when you have dialogue and engagement, talk is cheap, and everybody says, "That was great. Let's all go home and get on to the next best thing." So, we wanted to just share tonight briefly some of the outcomes that came from this engagement. And three things I want to share that just struck me. So, as a member of this group, we got together, my first observation was this that struck me, was what is possible when a diverse team of people commit to achieving a goal together? And that was very important in this. So, Lisa put together the team. We had three, we had university students, graduates, and undergraduates. We had faculty from the university. We had two high school graduates. Thank you Superintendent Scroochi for your support. They were amazing. And then, we had some community members who were from not in our town, welcome BG, had been involved in social services. And so, we were the team that tried to put together and come up with a topic that might be of interest to both the university and the city, that we could have a dialogue and engage with. So, we did that. The mayor and our president of the city council and Bruce were very supportive. They were part of that team, gave us input, contacts, and so forth. So, off we went. And what was, you know, having these two young high school students was just amazing. Their insights, their energy, their enthusiasm, and it was really fun to be able to work with them. They bookended the age on one end, and I bookended it on the other in terms of the team. And everybody on this team came up with the most amazing resources of expertise, and people with experience in this, and people that could help us access resources in that. And so, I was left with the first thing is what's possible when a diverse team commits together to achieving a goal together? We agreed on the topic of the opioid crisis because it affects all of us in some way or the other. We're very aware of that in Ohio. And so, we went about looking how we could address that in a dinner dialogue, engaging together. And that led me to my second thing, when we, when we actually had this event, of how dialogue and engagement that lead to action can support community building and keeping communities vital and fresh. So, at the outset of the dialogue, Bruce, you were there, you may remember, somebody asked, there were about 145 people there, if how many people in the room had been either directly affected by the opioid crisis, or were indirectly affected, or knew somebody who was affected. And there was an audible gasp in the room of, I mean, almost every hand went up. So, we gathered together, we had a participative approach to this. We had different tables with different topics, and people, like six to eight people at a table, talked about their own experiences. Some people came, they were very wounded from this, were still dealing with this. Other people were, had expertise in it in their professions. And so, we engaged together and talked about issues, concerns, what are some ideas, what's some possible solutions, what could we do in Bowling Green? And so, that engagement that was very strong, was a very powerful evening. And so, that led to action, and that was one of the things that really struck me, was people at the end committed to taking some kind of step. It wasn't just talk, but okay, I've learned all of this, I've offered all of this, now what am I willing to do? And it could be a simple step of, if I know my neighbor is suffering, or if I know somebody needs access to services, I would, I would offer to get engaged to other things further along that continuum. So, it was a very powerful evening, and which led me to my third thing, is just the importance of being intentional about having engagement and dialogue in our community, and what is possible when we, when we do that. And I think that making commitments and knowing that good, welcoming, safe communities don't just happen, it is about being intentional. And so, we wanted you to be aware that we had this, and Dr. Lisa Hanisono is going to share a few of the outcomes. We had some very specific outcomes from that time. And I just wanted to thank you for inviting me to be on that team and for the support that the city gave us to pull off this event. Thank you.
Wow. My name is Lisa Hanisono. I'm an associate professor in the School of Media and Communication at BGSU, and also have been very fortunate to be co-principal investigator for a grant that was funded by the Mid-American Conference, as you might know from sports, the MAC. Before I get started, I want to thank Mayor Edwards for the lovely introduction, Margaret, who's absolutely brilliant, for her excellent remarks. And if I could just have a quick moment to shout out Emily Dunnepest, as well as Carla McDavis McGowan, and Moja Bang Kamala, and Margaret Montague. If you guys stand up really quickly, I just want to give you a quick thank you. In addition to our two high school students, BGSU faculty, students, they've been absolutely amazing. They could move mountains, I believe it. They are absolutely miracle workers. Also, want to thank our community members, leaders, folks who've made this event possible. It really does take a village. Just to kind of further elaborate in terms of some of the key findings from our event, of course, the purpose of this project was to strengthen community and university relations by focusing on a multifaceted problem. And we focused on the opioid crisis, which is killing more than 130 people in the United States a day. And Ohio, as much as I love it, is ranked second in the number of opioid-related deaths. So, we've got some work to do, both in Northwest Ohio and abroad. And this event that we had called the Dinner Dialogue, Let's Talk About the Opioid Crisis, I think was particularly powerful because we've got great experts, we've got great resources, but we don't always necessarily talk with each other about how our stories, how we're being affected, and how we can help each other more. And so, in the interest of time, I just wanted to highlight a few of the action items that members identified, as well as some of the future steps, both to let us know so we can continue this conversation, but also for those who are making important decisions. I also really want to briefly just mention that we are so grateful for the speakers who shared their insight, which included President Rogers, City Council Member Bruce Jeffers, Teresa Gavron, State Senator Gavron, State Representative Haraz Gambare, and of course, Wood County Commissioner Dr. Ted Bullis, who really was incredible in making this possible. So, we had a wonderful team of people. But as far as identifying action items, we had about 20 pages of different things that people wanted to do, and we'd be happy to share that information. But for the sake of time, I will not read all of those and just highlight five main things. So, first of all, there is a pressing need. People said that they wanted to make the issue personal. Stats are stats are stats, but what are the stories, especially those who are coming from here? And I think that event allowed people to start those conversations. Second, people wanted to know more about how to properly dispose prescription medications and how to go door-to-door to get those. And so, I think there's a need and an interest, and so, getting the word out. There was a lot of people who indicated they wanted to learn how to administer Narcan, so how to be a helper in those moments of crisis and not just watch or call for help. Individuals wanted to get more involved in terms of serving, reaching out to local schools, being involved in community organizations, and perhaps most importantly, something that came up time and time again was helping the helpers. So, the caregivers, those who are helping, those focusing, coping with addiction, they get burnt out. So, how can we better be a community and not just kind of say, "Oh, that's their problem over there?" So, working together. As far as our project, we did collect some survey data, and we found, hooray, pre-test, post-test, that in general, the people who did attend really had increased awareness, increased desire to make change, and increased knowledge about the opioid crisis. So, it seems like we had some great impact, and also more positive relations and attitudes toward BG, so yay, City of BG, as well as to BGSU. So, all in all, it seemed like a really exciting event. And the final thing I wanted to just mention on a personal note, at the end of the event, a woman came up to me, and she had attended, and she expressed that she was really happy that she attended, but she had originally had a lot of trepidation. She didn't know if she wanted to go and be in that room because she had had some personal experiences. See, her daughter, her adult daughter had died of an opioid-related death after battling addiction for quite some time, and she was here raising her granddaughter, so her daughter's daughter, she was now the primary guardian. And she felt somewhat isolated, but she wanted to see what this event was all about. And she, on a whim, was brave and came to be part of, just as a participant, to be part of the conversation. And she came up to me afterwards, and she... And she came up to me afterwards, and she said, "Lisa, this was so exciting. There's a gym, a room full of people, and I can see that I'm not alone, and that people care about this issue, and that this issue is important to BG." And that was really exciting, really inspiring, that we are making a profound impact, not just in terms of bringing our community and our university together, but also really, really helping individuals in their everyday lives. So wanted to say thank you again to all who made this possible, especially our community collaborators, and leaders, and those who spoke at the event. And we hope to keep the conversation going, so please keep your eyes and ears open. This is the first of hopefully more opportunities for us to dialogue about important issues and work together. Thank you.
Excuse me, just one second, Mr. Mayor. Just want to mention that if anybody needs somebody to coordinate an event where there's a lot of dialogue, Dr. Hanisona is your person. There's, I've been to a lot of dialogue-type meetings over many years, this is the best one I've ever been to, and thank you for it very much.
Mr. President, members of council, just two quick additional notes here. One, I just want to thank you tonight, Greg, and your committee, Sandy, and Bruce, for getting the ball rolling on this. I know you've spent a lot of time already on this, and I just want to reassure you that there's ongoing discussions, as you probably know, involving Lori with vice presidents at the university. There's also discussions between the mayor and the president of the university, and we are going to be getting, following up here in the not-too-distant future, you and I have talked about it. But beforehand, he's going to be meeting with the board of trustees, having this very important discussion about the East Worcester Street, because we all know what they've done, that they, being the university, the board of trustees support, foundation of taking down some of those derelict buildings and that. So they are doing a lot, working with us, I just can't say enough about their cooperation in terms of working with the East Worcester Street corridor. We all have our high hopes. The president said, "Can't you do something about Thurston and Manville?", you know, about a building there, that it's kind of, you know. And he's tried to persuade there, because there's a broken window, it doesn't look very nice, you talk about the eyesores coming in on Poe Road, Lee. There are some other spots in this town that, but that one is kind of disturbing over there as well. Also, I just wanted to thank you, Mr. President, for going down to Columbus. I know that, taking valuable time going with Lori and Brian O'Connell to talk about House Bill 6. I know that through Amp Ohio, every effort was made to reach our state representative. And I won't get into that anymore, other than we've tried to reach him, I've tried to with letters, and I've talked with him personally and so forth. We've had good discussions with state Senator Gavron, and she covers a wide area there, including Ottawa County. We're not asking necessarily to, that, away with House Bill 6, but trying to see in some way to have some things grandfathered in, so if communities like Bowling Green that have made this substantial commitment, can at least be recognized in there and not lose our tax credits, because we've made a huge investment. And we think, we know, we're doing the right thing. And to see some of the elements that have worked their way into this bill, for anyone interested in the environment, are rather disturbing. So all we can do is hope for the best, and that we can keep this conversation going, and maybe that we will have some luck over in the senate. I know some of the areas, communities around, will be meeting again with Senator Gavron coming up, I think on Friday. And so every effort's being made to carry on the conversation in preparation for the senate. It's not all one point of view, it was very much of a divided house on this issue, and I have a reason to believe that the same will be true in the state senate. So if you have questions for me, thanks so much for your patience tonight, we've had a lot going on here, and we appreciate it very, very much. But if you have any questions or points that you wish to make with me--
Other questions for Mayor Edwards?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Municipal administrator, Ms. Tretter.
No report to see him.
Other questions for Lori? Thank you. Planning director, Ms. Saber.
Good evening, no report.
Questions for Heather? You, Parks and Recreation Director, Ms. Ottley?
Sorry to break the string.
Sorry to break that string, I just have a few things, just a couple things going on in Parks and Rec right now, because it is June. So this Friday, coming up, is the very first lunch in the park, and I believe we have some special guest hosts that are going to be there. Mayor Edwards and his lovely wife, Nadine, will be there, help serving, so pass that schedule around. The show is going on, I know there's a little construction project going on in City Park, but our events are still happening. We will have a golf cart there, if we do have some people that do not, are not able to walk as far, parking, there is parking, it just might not be right there. So just flag down a volunteer in our golf cart that we usually have out at Simpson. Same will hold true for concerts in the park, which start on Sunday, and that is the Bowling Green Area Community Band, so you might as well be there, because all of Bowling Green will be, so either playing, or related, or watching, so on the Needle Hall stage. And also this Friday, we have, I believe it's the fourth year, but it's not on the flyer, and my memory is not what it used to be. But we are partnering once again with the Bowling Green Arts Council, and we have art in the park at Simpson. And it does not look like there is a time on here either. I didn't make this flyer, but there you go. So this Friday, I believe it's at 5:00, but check the website for that. And then all of our camps kicked off today, and I just came from City Park, where Eli Joyce Field officially kicked off the games for our youth softball and T-ball program. So that is always fun to see. And the pool did open on Memorial Day weekend, in between all the rain showers, it has been open. And now that school is officially out, it is open for the season every day, obviously weather-dependent, but we're hoping that we get a, from here on out, a very hot, dry summer. I obviously can't control that, that's just my wish. So that is all that I have, unless you have questions with me.
Questions for Kristen.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Very artistic, it's hidden there. So I was right at 5:00, awesome.
Thank you. City attorney, Mr. Marsh. Other questions for Mr. Marsh? Utility director, Mr. O'Connell.
So on Saturday, we had quite a bit of rain, so out at the wastewater plant, we recorded 2.6 inches of rain. You know, obviously that can vary across the county and different parts of the city, may get more, may get less. We did have a CSO event, I don't think it will count against us for our four or less per year, because of the amount of rainfall that we received in the time span. We did not have any power outages, which was a good thing, because of the, a lot of times lightning and thunder will cause those to trip out or cause outages. But we didn't have any reported outages, so didn't lose power for any customers during that event. Did have some street floodings, and obviously we had a lot of rain in general, so whenever you add that to, we've had, at this point, you may have water standing in certain parts of the city for some time, but it should go away in due time. A lot of talk about House Bill 6 tonight, and there's a resolution for council, and if you have questions for me to address, or if you have just anything in general you want to talk about that. But you know, Mike and Lori and I went down last week, I think it was mentioned before, that we met with Senator Gavron, and we got a very good and productive meeting. I really appreciate you and Lori going with me down there to speak with her, and you know, show the importance of this for Bowling Green, and try to get our points across, so appreciate that, Mike.
Yes, it's my pleasure. I wanted to, actually, I was going to say thank you for taking time out of your day to go down there. Say to the people in the audience, you know, this guy, in his grasp of legislation and facts, and how they are going to impact our utility operations, is an ability to relate those in a way that is non-confrontational, but yet just points out the facts, was really very impressive. So Brian, thank you for your work. I know that you've been lobbying members of the legislature for quite some time, in trying to tell them, you know, our point of view, number one, that, you know, House Bill 6, I believe, and we share this belief, that House Bill 6 unnecessarily penalizes municipalities like Bowling Green, that have done the right thing, and have invested heavily in clean air energy sources. So it's not difficult for me to sponsor this resolution this evening, opposing the bill, simply because the final form of the bill does not include any amendments that have been suggested by AMP that could allow them to perhaps meet their main objective in subsidizing the nuclear industry, but not do so at the expense of municipalities like Bowling Green. So I think that although it's passed the house, as you indicated, we did have a productive conversation with Senator Gavron, and I'm confident that she does understand the issues as they relate to Bowling Green. So this is one thing that we will continue to do, hopefully we'll approve this resolution this evening, and we'll continue to speak with her throughout this process, and we'll remain hopeful, because it's very important that we do so. But most importantly, thank you for all the work that you do in educating me and others, you know, on the impacts of this bill, and the importance of us voicing our opposition.
Thank you, Mike. If I get updates from AMP or OMEA, I'll certainly pass them on to you and the mayor and Lori, and keep you posted, but thank you.
I do have something, Mr. President. It's being, it's starting to be talked about a lot in the media, but we all know that the general public sometimes gets lost understanding what this bill would do to harm the city of Bowling Green. So I would just like to request that one of you maybe give us three talking points of how harmful this is, I mean, how will this play out in our own community if it passes the way it is?
Okay.
I know it's hard to shorten it.
Yeah, well, the short version is that for us, it will eliminate the renewable portfolio standards that have been in the state of Ohio for over a decade now, and we sell renewable energy credits from our green energy resources, renewable energy resources. And of course, that brings in revenue to the electric utility, when we sell those recs. And this House Bill 6 will eliminate the renewable, the RPS, renewable portfolio standard, that allows us to sell those recs in Ohio. So the rec market in Ohio is basically created by the state, and they're going to eliminate that rec market. And so while, we get about $1 million per year in revenue from the rec market, the biggest portion comes from our hydro rec sales. Now that doesn't mean that we can't sell recs in other states, or, you know, get revenue from selling recs in Pennsylvania, or Michigan, or Kentucky, maybe something like that. But in a lot of states, they devalue out-of-state recs, so, you know, we take a loss or reduce revenue from selling those in other states. Some states don't allow you to sell certain types of recs in their state, because it wasn't produced in that state. And so, you know, I'm kind of using the number of around $400,000 lost revenue per year, that's my estimate, basically saying that if we had $1 million in revenue, and we're going to lose something, because we can't sell them in Ohio anymore, we got to go to other states, it's not going to be zero, obviously that $1 million won't go to zero, because we can still get some revenue for that sale. But it's going to be substantial, because the supply of the recs will go up to those other states, because everybody else in Ohio that wants to sell recs is going to go to those states and try to sell them. And so when the supply goes up, but the demand doesn't increase, the prices go down, that's just basic economic principles. And so there's going to be more lowering of rec prices, or rec revenue in general. So to me, $400,000 seemed like a reasonable number. It could be more, it could be less, I don't know, but it's going to be something greater than zero, for sure.
And will the consumers not be charged more as a result of the passage of this bill also?
Well, it doesn't affect municipal electric systems, so while we would not pay into the House Bill 6 Clean Air Program, our customers would not pay into that program, we also would not be able to sell our renewable energy assets into a clean air program. So right now, we can, we're not obligated by the RPS either, but we can sell our recs into the rec market that the RPS created. So to me, all really I'm asking for is, don't harm us, give us some avenue to replace that revenue in some way, shape, or form, if that be through, like, not eliminating the RPS, they could do this and not eliminate the RPS requirement. They could allow us to sell our assets into the Clean Air Program. You know, it doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be one or the other, it could be both. If they feel a need to bail out the nuclear plants, okay, then that would be paid for by First Energy customers, not by Bowling Green customers. But if they take away a revenue source, revenue source from a not-for-profit utility, I have to replace that revenue with some money from someplace, and the other place to get that from is my customers. And so that means all of Bowling Green customers will pay for whatever that lost revenue equals. Is that more than three points?
It's very detailed through, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. O'Connell?
Brian, would it be safe to say that if House Bill 6 passes in its current form, that it would put a damper on Ohio's trajectory toward more renewable sources of energy?
I think it likely would, because that's a revenue source that wouldn't be available for somebody that developed solar, wind, hydro. I think the price of wind and solar has gone down so much, that we're starting to see that some of those are not a big burden anymore, like the way they were maybe five or 10 years ago. But obviously, if you take away a revenue source from an asset that can receive that, then that's going to make it harder to do that kind of a project. So, you know, we count that, when we do our financial models and analysis for energy supply, that we may want to add to our portfolio, we look at those rec revenues and say, well, how much is that going to bring in, you know, estimated? And how much does that bring down the price of that project? If you don't have that revenue anymore, then obviously that price, you know, goes up for that resource, which goes to our customers. So I think, yeah, it could have a damper on it, for sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian, very much.
Thank you.
Public Works Director, Mr. Kraft.
Well, I guess like Brian was trying to minimize rainfall, I'm going to minimize, we have a little bit of construction going on. Downtown, Spear Brothers is still working through the heart of downtown, doing the water taps, and next up will be a gravity sewer, they got actually two crews trying to expedite getting out of town. We met with an ex-contractor, B&amp;J Concrete, today, looking at getting him here in town on the heels of the first contractor to start making repairs, put things back in order. Out on the roundabout, ODOT has got a lot of work going on with the overpass being closed, they're going to do the bridge deck pour this Thursday night, overnight, all night, the south half of the bridge deck, to get that moving along. We've got curbs down up in that area, they allow, the signals have been removed. They're still doing the water line, the forest main, the sewer, and the pump stations, that's pretty much why all that pipe is out there on Poe Road, it's for that project there. The BGSU was gracious to let them use that location. So by August, all that stuff should hopefully be in the ground where it belongs on that project. Wooster Green, we poured some curbs in 200 Block West Wooster today. We didn't really think we were going to do that, but the closer we looked at it, the curbs were in bad shape, so we thought now's the time to do it. And that will extend the paving of the downtown to Grove, to get that lined up with the new curbs. Columbia Gas started last week, they're out on State Street in that residential area, all the way up to University Lane, in the Clough-Wooster area, they'll be doing that all summer, trying to get done before the university resumes to upgrade the gas pressure and lines in that area. The Storm Brush Collection, from last week's storm, appreciate people's patience on that. We got through wards one and two today, we're in three, probably get through three and four, probably tomorrow or Wednesday. And, you know, Lee touched on the gardeners and all that. We do have a yard waste collection, where you can drop it off at the shop 365 days a year, so that's available. We haul that out to the landfill, and they mix that in with the compost, that's actually a good thing. And then of course the four brush collections, we're getting it where people are learning to call in and get that done in April, May, and September and October, so that's been a big help, along with this surprise storm we had, we'll have five of them this year. So last thing, trying to get the sidewalk program going, we've got some work we're doing at Wooster Green, once we get that done, we're going to get on our sidewalk program, get that rolling this year. get that rolling this year, and get it buttoned up, and try to get some crack ceiling on our road yet this summer, so for students to get back. So that's a lot of work. Thanks for your patience with all the construction, and I'll take any questions if you have any.
Questions for Brian. Target date for paving contractors starting in the downtown area is?
He was looking to be here in a couple of weeks, and he's trying to get out of his jobs he's doing in Toledo to come down here. First thing you would see is milling of the pavement on the west half of South Main. But we'll see how quickly we can get him here.
Great.
Thanks.
Thanks, Brian. Excuse me. That concludes our official reports. We thank you for all those reports. Do we have any council committee reports this evening?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Robinett.
I think as everyone in council is aware, the Planning, Zoning, and Economic Development Committee met this evening to discuss the East Worcester Street document, strategy for redevelopment, and implementation recommendations. We have a group of recommendations to make to council, and I guess I'll formalize those over the next two weeks and present them formally at the next meeting. But I think we all, I won't elaborate, and we're all here, but I'll present those formally at the next meeting.
Very good. Greg, I thought that was a really good discussion. Thank you and your committee members. I just want to briefly say that I heard members of your committee say that they're feeling a little bit consulted out, and that they're feeling as though that we have reached the time of action. And I'd wanted to just add my words of support to that approach. I feel that all of us, I'm sure, given an opportunity, would agree that although all of these processes that the community has gone through the past several years have been beneficial, there have been a number of community improvement opportunities that have been identified. And I think that all of us are eager for action and look forward to opportunity to coordinate with our community partners that you identified, BGSU, Wood County Hospital, and certainly all the members of our community. But I just wanted to lend my voice of support to your efforts to initiate action, because I think that all of us agree it's time to go. So thank you very much for pushing that envelope a little bit.
Mr. President, I'd like to echo what you said and also point out a few, narrow down to a few astute comments that were made by the committee. One, I thought Bruce, your comment that being, going through the process of getting the reports, I mean, it started off with a master plan update, then CAP, and then Worcester Street corridor. Your point was, you want to go through that because you want to have a set plan to show all the organizations and businesses that, yes, we're not going to be changing. We've got a set course. So I thought that was very astute. And then Sandy echoed that. And then with Greg, his comment was that we have been doing things. And if you take a look at what the city's done over the past so many years, when we had the master plan update, there were the principles that were outlined, and we didn't wait. It would be simplistic to think that we didn't, we haven't been doing anything until these three reports have been done. That's simplistic and inaccurate. With the master plan update, that initiated, of course, the subsequent reports, but it also gave us a way forward to say, what is our target demographic? What is it that we can do? And if you take a look at some of the initiatives that council has already done, an example that comes to mind is food trucks. Part of the motivation for making food trucks more accessible to Bowling Green was to target the demographic that was outlined in the master plan update. And the same thing with continued focus on sidewalks and complete streets and bicycle lanes, et cetera. So that's with the master plan. With the CAP, your committee was awesome in putting together priorities for the CAP. We haven't waited. There's been a list, an initial list, and it's been worked on. The administration's done a yeoman's effort. And so the idea that, oh, we just study, and now it's time for action, it's time to kick it up a notch. But we have been working on it for a number of years. And I just want to commend the committee for making those comments and observations, and for guiding us in refining the plans. So thank you.
Thank you. Additional council committee reports.
Mr. President, on a related note, Representative Zanfordino made a comment that perhaps I wasn't as clear last meeting when I summarized the results we've had in the CAP very broadly. And I think I wasn't clear. And all I was doing with that summary, John, was simply capturing the report that was dated 1 March 2019, and just summarizing it broad brush because I had previously distributed. But I brought seven more copies. So if anybody wants another copy of that 1 March update on where we were on the CAP project, you can have it after the meeting. But that's all that was, was just a summary of what was captured in detail in this document. So it wasn't anything to, and I'm sorry if that wasn't clear when I reported that.
Thank you. It'd be great to have another copy of that. I appreciate that, Greg.
I'll pick that up after.
Thank you, Greg. Very good. Let's move on to the reading of legislative.
Mr. President, I want to say something about plastic bag council meetings.
No, because I haven't finalized.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move forward to the reading of legislation. Okay, thank you.
Legislation for first reading. Resolution number 3733 for first reading. Resolution adopting the estimate of revenues for the year 2020. Resolution number 3734 for first reading. Resolution strongly urging the Ohio governor and the members of the Ohio General Assembly to restore the local government fund to pre-recession levels.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffers.
I move we suspend the rules and give resolution 3734 at second and third readings.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Harold.
Yes.
Hollandbaugh.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Rowland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Motion passes. The rules are suspended for resolution 3734.
Resolution number 3734 for second and third reading. Resolution strongly urging the Ohio governor and the members of the Ohio General Assembly to restore the local government fund to pre-recession levels.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffers.
I move we adopt resolution 3734.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I'm waiting for someone else to talk.
I would, yeah, thanks. I would just comment that the timing on this is important. That's why we're waiving the rules and giving the second and third readings this evening. Obviously, the state legislature is still going through their budget negotiations. Although we have heard that there is some discussion about restoring some level of local government assistance, I think that it's important that we lend our voice to those other municipalities who are urging the state lawmakers to consider returning tax dollars to local communities. I think all of us would agree that we have seen negative impacts of this reduction in investment in our local community by virtue of deterioration of our infrastructure primarily. I think that everybody would agree that it has had a negative impact. So I think it's certainly worthy for us and proper for us to pass this resolution in urging the state legislature later to continue, or to consider restoring aid and reinvesting in our local community.
Mr. President, I think the same thing. Can't say it as eloquently or briefly as you, but it's very frustrating. And I thought Daniel, when he had his comments, very well done, by the way, Daniel, when he had his comments, brought up that, and I'm paraphrasing, that how many of our challenges at the local level are somewhat related to actions at the state level? We've got several examples tonight. That's not just that, and it's not just simply relegated to local government. I think we could talk at length about the impact on our local public school system. And it's particularly frustrating to me, and I can relate to Daniel's frustration, being individuals that study government in general, that it's just frustrating that we are so hamstrung by actions at the state level. And I don't know what the solution is, but I certainly wholeheartedly endorse this particular resolution. So that's my two cents.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, it should be more than two cents because the state might take some.
Any additional comments? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Hollandbaugh.
Hell, yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Rowland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Motion passes. Resolution 3734 is adopted.
Resolution number 3735 for first reading. Resolution authorizing the city of Bowling Green to participate in the local park improvement grant program and to file an application and accept grant funding upon grant application approval. Resolution number 3736 for first reading. Resolution opposing House Bill 6.
I move to suspend the rules and give resolution 3736 at second and third reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Rowland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Harold.
Abstain.
Hollandbaugh.
Yes.
Motion passes. Rules are suspended for resolution 3736.
Resolution number 3736 for second and third reading. Resolution opposing House Bill 6.
I move to adopt resolution 3736.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, I feel compelled, because I don't want to have even the semblance of impropriety, to not comment at all or vote on this because I work for a company that's helping to make the world a better place. First Solar, not First Energy. I work for First Solar, and of course, they make really, really good solar panels. So I don't want anybody to think that any comments or vote is some sort of conflict of interest. I do have strong feelings that would be there regardless, but I will, and to the shock of all council, refrain.
Thank you. Any additional comments?
Mr. President, I want to add, too, that even though last Thursday, I decided to reach out to Representative Gambari and share my views on House Bill 6, which, for the purpose of asking for support for our situation in Bowling Green. And he did take my call, and we did speak at length before he went into a committee meeting and then eventually voting. I did not know at the time when I reached out that we had a team meeting of city officials and putting you down there. I was extremely disappointed with the vote on this issue. But I do want to add that, as was mentioned earlier, there are a couple of different avenues that we can still pursue our interests on regardless of what happens at each next step. Even if the bill passes as it's written, there's an opportunity for subsequent legislation to achieve what we want to achieve in getting the relief that we need in Bowling Green. And while, again, I don't know, I'm not going to put any kind of odds on that happening. I know the discussions will start, and at a minimum, I did get Representative Gambari's assurance that if we're left out of the final legislation, if it isn't acted in law, and we're not getting the relief that we need, that he would have Bowling Green at the table for those discussions on subsequent following legislation to address those issues. Now, take it for what it's worth. That's what he told me personally. So I'll take him at his word on that right now. I think this resolution is appropriate. We need to be pushing for this now and not later to get that. But I just want to say that the doors aren't closed if we lose this first round. We even lose in the Senate. We can still fight, and there's still an opportunity through legislation to get the relief that we're seeking in Bowling Green. So we need to continue to fight this now. But I am disappointed that our interests in Wood County aren't being looked after right now. So let's get this out.
Thank you, Greg.
I hardly support that.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Robinette.
Yes.
Rowland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Harold.
Abstain.
Hollandbaugh.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Motion passes. Resolution 3736 is adopted.
Legislation for second reading. Resolution number 3730 for second reading. Resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio, to file an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources for the purpose of acquiring financial assistance from the Nature Works Program. Resolution number 3731 for second reading. Resolution authorizing the filing of a proposal and/or application with the Ohio Department of Transportation for grants through the U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Transit Administration, as authorized under federal transit laws as codified 49 U.S.C. Section 5311, financial assistance for other than urbanized areas and funds available from the Ohio Public Transportation Grant Program, executing a contract or grant for the fiscal year 2020 Ohio Elderly and Disabled Transit Fair Assistance Program, and 5339 and/or 5311, funding for capital and/or operating assistance, and executing a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation upon grant proposal and/or application approval.
President, two things. One, that was awesome again this time. And second, just to clarify, is there at any point a need for a public hearing on this?
If there is, it would be handled, you know, be advertised separately by the grants department, but we can get you that information.
Okay.
But council does not need to schedule one.
Oh, we don't need to. Okay. That answers it. Thank you.
Ordinance number 8775 for second reading. Ordinance levying a $5 motor vehicle license tax as authorized by the Ohio Revised Code. Ordinance number 8776 for second reading. Ordinance authorizing the utilities director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts to replace the ATAD tank covers at the water pollution control facility. Legislation for third reading. Ordinance number 8771 for third reading. Ordinance amending the zoning district map of the city of Bowling Green for property generally known as 525 Ridge Street from B1 Limited Commercial to R5 University-related residential zoning.
Mr. President.
Mr. Robinett.
I move to table ordinance 8771 until the conclusion of the public hearing scheduled for June 17.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Rowland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hollandbaugh.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinance 8771 is tabled.
Ordinance number 8773 for third reading. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator and the utilities director to request qualifications and enter into a contract or contracts for architectural and engineering services related to a city administrative services building feasibility study.
I move to adopt ordinance 8773.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hollandbaugh.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Rowland.
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinance 8773 is adopted.
Ordinance number 8774 for third reading. Ordinance authorizing the utilities director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts and/or participate in the inter-local purchasing system for roof replacement at the water and sewer facility.
I move to adopt ordinance 8774.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Osbacher.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hollandbaugh.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Rowland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinance 8774 is adopted. That concludes all of the items on our agenda this evening. Is there any more business to come before council? Very good. Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.